Brittany, Dan, Jennifer, and Tony, may please come right up to the table if you'd like, or however you want to do it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tony Hanson, Regional Director with the University of Minnesota Extension. Happy to be accompanying some more of members of the Crow Wing County Extension Team here this morning as they provide an annual update to the Board. Just a few remarks to share before they take over and share their presentation. I just wanted to thank the Commissioners for their continued support of the Master Gardener Program here in Crow Wing County. This has been an investment for a number of years now, and I think especially during our Extension Committee meetings and with these annual updates, there's a clear return on investment that's being seen with the programming and coordination that's being done throughout the county. And so, that's sincerely appreciated. It's reflective of our 2025 budget proposal for extension as well. And we think that that continued investment will show dividends into the future in serving residents of Crow Wing County. Otherwise, I continue to work with the Extension Team. Appreciate being able to see a few of you out at the County Fair and supporting our 4-H program as well. Our next Extension Committee meeting isn't until November, but if any of you have questions about any of our extension programming here in the county, happy to help you out. Feel free to contact me at any time. Any questions before I turn it over to my colleagues?
I have none.
Nope. Thank you all.
I believe you have our presentation slide deck in advance. So, I'm Dan Lee. I'm with the Crow Wing County Master Gardeners, but I'm also part of the State Advisory Board for the Master Gardener Program. We have five regions across the state of Minnesota. We happen to be part of the northeast region that goes all the way up into the Arrowhead. So, we're as far south and west as you can get to be in the northeast region. As part of my role and responsibility there, we bring back ideas to the rest of the state Master Gardeners. And I'm proud to be here along with Brittany and Jennifer to talk a little bit about what we've been doing in Crow Wing County and what has been seeded across the state of Minnesota in large part because of some of the things that you've helped us accomplish here. So, in Crow Wing County, we have something that we call the Community Giving Project. And this started as a Giving Garden project in 2020 at the start of the pandemic. We knew there was a need for food. People were hurting because businesses had been shut down. And we started by growing fresh food, donating it to the local Salvation Army and food shelves in Brainerd. From that start, we've expanded the project to now have a bedding plant team that starts bedding plants for all the other projects that we have across the county. Since 2019, 2020, we've started close to 2,000 bedding plants that we've either used directly or donated to places like The Shed and other organizations that serve people in need across the county. We also started a patio garden project, and Jennifer's going to talk a little bit more about that later on. But basically, we plant bedding plants in a one and a half to two gallon container so that people can have a little bit of a garden in situations where they don't have the space for a larger garden. We've done over 700 patio gardens since we started doing that three years ago. We also, as part of the Master Gardener Program, are tasked with educating the public, both youth and adults. And we have a team that teaches youth gardening at the Northland Arboretum. And we have a team that teaches adult gardening at the Northland Arboretum. Both of those teams are charged with giving people basic horticultural skills so that they have the confidence to go back to their home or their community and do some gardening on their own. And it's very fun to watch youth and novice gardeners for the first time actually have success, see the joy in gardening, see the joy in helping themselves and their communities that we can foster through that education. And then lastly, we have Giving Garden where we grow food for the community that is donated in the community. About two years ago, Commissioner Barrows challenged us with expanding what we're doing at the Northland Arboretum as far as the size of our Giving Garden. And this year, we actually found the funding to expand the community gardens by about a third. So, we are now producing even more food than we ever have been able to do before. And that food is donated across the county. The nice thing about this that I think is a testament to Crow Wing County is we got the funding from a variety of sources that all saw the value in what we're doing. Affinity Credit, Wings, Mid-Minnesota, Sourcewell, Mike's Tree Company, Anderson Brothers, Fleet Farm. All of these employers and organizations in the county are supporting the Master Gardener Program like you're supporting the Master Gardener Program because they see the value in what we're doing to the people of Crow Wing County. And with that, I am going to turn this over to Jennifer.
So, if you can move forward. Keep going. There we go. The Giving Garden. As Dan alluded or mentioned, the Giving Garden was started in 2020, and it has expanded through the years. And we are obviously very proud of this. As many of you know, we have the largest area over at the Northland Arboretum, but we have since added Ideal Corners. We have also added CLC, Timberwood Church, and we have three individuals who have Giving Gardens at their house that they then bring their produce to the local food shelves. And one of the most interesting things that we have is a partnership with Cross Lake Community Gardens where one of our members has worked with those gardeners who have excess food or have no, they can't use it that week, whatever. And she spins by there, picks up their food, and then brings it to either Cross Lake or Pequot Lakes or Emily as a donation. We track that separately because we don't want anybody to think, oh, that's just Master Gardeners taking it. No, we want them to get the credit for the credit that they have been doing, growing that food. And we've partnered with a number of organizations. Salvation Army, Garrison, Down South, Kuna, Cross Lake, Pequot Lakes Area Food Shelf, Emily, Crow Wing County WIC, and Social Services, which I have to admit is always fun when we bring it in and we ask for the dolly. And I think their eyes get a little large because we're bringing in the tomatoes. Beware, the tomatoes haven't started yet. Just letting you know. Also over to CLC and Relationship Alliance. And it's always fun, and we tell our interns the first time, when you get an opportunity to take your food delivery to that location, that is your aha moment. That is why we do it. So, the Giving Garden by the numbers, it has been interesting through the years. And that number as of the 12th is wrong. Well, it was right on the 12th. As of yesterday, we are 1,185 pounds that have been donated. Yesterday, in fact, we had almost a whopping 200 pounds that were delivered to Emily. So, we're now hitting our surge. We were a little bit light, you know, and it's been a cold and wet season. The tomatoes haven't started, but I will tell you, it is going to be booming. So, unlike zucchinis, this year it's tomatoes. You can see the numbers from 2023. We like to differentiate too because we don't, it's countywide. Not everything is grown at the Arboretum, and yet, look at what Cross Lake pulled through, and Ideal Corners, and our personal Giving Gardens. So, 4,000 pounds in one year from a number of sources that helped fight food insecurity throughout Crow Wing County. The Patio Garden, as Dan mentioned, has been in existence since about 2021, 2020, 2021. It has been fun. And last year, you heard the story about Peppermint. And Peppermint is, Peppermint did not get a new plant this year. He still has his pepper. And it is my understanding that Chelsea Perkins has spoken with Peppermint for a follow-up interview. So, we'll let you know as soon as we know when that's going to be either aired or in print. But he is making his resurgence. And that's just one thing. It's keeping the mental health. It's that companionship. It's something to do. And it's the opportunity to get some exercise, whatever it may be. And the recipients, we always love to hear our food, our feedback on it. And if you go to the next slide, these are just a few of the pictures of our recipients when they show up. Of course, they know they have to have their pictures. And when we send out the email, it's, it's like, we've had our customers, guests, clients, whatever you want to call them, asking if we were going to get one this year. They look forward to it as much as we look forward to the day that we're able to say, come and get your plants. Oh, and by the way, we were able to throw in a few extras this year. It was a bounty this year. We had over 500 plants that we were able to donate or gardens. And it is always a very, very fun time. The next slide. And as you can see, the patio feedback. To have gotten emails from our client or our, the recipients from their clients saying, it helped me in my health, just to give something, just to love something, to give it and see it responding back. Those are why we do it. And as you can tell, those are pretty unique organizations that we impact. And it's because of your support and your willingness to help us that make this so, so important and so rewarding for all of the Master Gardeners and all of the recipients that we in fact have. Next slide. And last but not least, you can see some of our media mentions. As I mentioned, CLC is a new big one for us. They, after last year, they had gotten some funding, and as you can see up in the upper right-hand corner, they had some gardens built. It is my understanding that they're already working on perhaps an expansion for next year. Our gardeners who are out there absolutely love it. They have signs, welcome to the Giving Garden, and posts now that say, stop in and get your fresh produce. We're helping them stock. And as you can see, Home Instead in the upper left-hand corner was sending our posts of when they were getting ready to deliver. These are just a few. Sometimes we have some other posts that we can't quite bring in, but we wanted to, to show you a few of our media mentions and how proud we are of what we are able to do for the residents of Crow Wing County.
All right. My name is Brittany, and I'm going to wrap it up today. I'm the coordinator for all the Master Gardener volunteers in the county. I'm really proud as a, as a part-time employee to, to leverage the efforts of these passionate volunteers that see needs in their community, take the mission of the University of Minnesota, and, and just put it to life throughout our county. So, if you look at the map, right now, we have 71 volunteers scattered throughout the county. This past year, we did 28 different projects at different locations. That can be from, you know, the Arboretum is a long-time location that we work at, or it could be a garden that we helped install, or it could be a shoreline buffer that we were involved in. And then, next slide. This graph shows kind of a timeline of our efforts from 2020. As you can see, every year, both the hours that we've reported, so we, the volunteers report every hour that they volunteer into a database, have grown, have over doubled since 2020. And our contacts that have also increased fourfold since 2020. And that's important to us to document all of that so we can show our efforts and quantify what we're doing. We don't want to just be, you know, reporting hours. We want to be educating the public and making an impact in their lives. Next slide. Just some of the other things we do, the Community Giving Project that Dan and Jennifer outlined is our biggest project that we undertake, and over, I think, 80% of our volunteers participate in some aspect of that project. But we do other, we have a lot of other projects that we do. We're always available to answer questions from the, from the public, whether it's through our helpline, or through our contact form, or just stopping by the office. We also are happy to do educational booths. We were at the County Fair this past, you know, couple of weeks ago and talked to over 500 people about their gardens and answered their garden questions. Last year in 2023, we had 50 calls to the helpline. We're tracking much higher than that this year. We also hold monthly presentations at the Brainerd Library. Every, the second Tuesday, we talk, we have a Master Gardener volunteer talk about a different horticulture subject. We now are hybrid, so we're in, on Zoom and in person. And last year, we had 463 people attend. So, we're always striving to reach more people and be inclusive and accommodating and make, you know, make it easy and entertaining for them to, to come learn. Green space in Crow Wing County, this is 2023 stats. We've maintained over 7,000 feet of garden space. We are working on educational signage on that too, so people know, know what they're looking at and can be inspired to improve their own spaces. We're happy to partner with projects. We do a lot on our own, but we also can have more impact partnering with other, with other organizations. So, Waipoa has been a, a good contact for us to do shoreline buffers and installations. And we're happy to, to provide some manpower and also learn from them. Dan and Jennifer, they're a great impetus for me to, they're always excited to expand. You know, they're teaching their adult and youth gardening classes, and they'll be like, you know, I bet we could zoom this over to Emily. And I'd be like, you know, that sounds great. I think I could figure out how to do that. So, that's still in the works. But we're always looking for ways to expand and to grow our program and to take on more. A few things that I like to highlight, the Food Shelf Coalition, like Jennifer said, we're happy to sit on the Food Shelf Coalition and take their input and, and guidance on what we can do to help, whether it's grow more tomatoes or grow less, you know, Tomatillos, or, or just other organizations that we're not even aware of that could use our help. My Neighbor to Love, the picture in the bottom left, we had some volunteers go over and install a food garden and also kind of help with their landscaping. They have a great vision to have a community food forest and give the people that were, used to be homeless, now a home, and the stability of growing their own food. We're always happy to come and speak. The picture in the bottom right-hand corner is Sally Jacobson speaking at the Head Start Conference. That was statewide and held in Craigens. And she spoke on gardening with youth. Next slide is just more pictures, happy volunteers. Diane Cash is the mayor in Crosby, and she also works with the youth at Port Group Homes and plants flowers with them and guides them on like a weekly or bi-weekly basis. Well, we have adults harvesting from their garden. We have patio garden pickup. We have the workday as we expanded in the gardens. So, yeah, thanks for sharing those pictures. And then, last but not least, we're having an open house tomorrow. You're all invited. It's at the Northland Arboretum. If you go kind of up the hill, just through the gates, that's where the community giving area is, and the gardens are looking really good. The youth will just be wrapping up their class, and they'll be leaving. Dan and Jennifer will be having their class that evening. And we have a plant sale going on this weekend, so we'll have volunteers there working on the plant sale. So, you'll get a good snippet of a lot of activity in a small space. Thank you very much. Any questions about the program?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions, but I just want to thank each of you for what you folks do over there. The impact in the community is outstanding. When I see 11,000 pounds over the last, what, three years, that's an amazing amount of vegetables that are going out into the community and serving people that might have food insecurity. So, I appreciate that. My challenge to you folks, you met it and exceeded it, and I applaud you for that. I just, I don't know what to say because I'm restricted by geographic boundaries. And, but I think you even go outside of those. And I think that the electronic component of your presentations allows you to go to almost anywhere. So, I don't know what to challenge you with next, other than wait to see, be surprised by what you folks do. So, thank you for all you do. I appreciate it. I know that the students that are out there, the young people, that this is a great education component for them, but also the adults. And just having something to do, and I know that food insecurity is a big issue right now, and the cost of food in the grocery stores, this just takes, helps a little bit with their budgets and that, and I appreciate it very much. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners and Administrator.
I have one thing. I did make it out there, and I think Rosemary did also to that extension that you did out at the, at the Arboretum, and to make it handicap accessible. Because, you know, right now, I have a neighbor that, that always had a beautiful garden, and now he's gotten to the point where he can't really get down to work on it anymore. And I'm, I'm thinking like, well, maybe I'm going to have to figure out a way of raising those beds up for him a little bit because he used to bring me produce over from his garden to my house, you know. So, but thank you guys for all that time you, you volunteer and do that. I also noticed, I think that Pequot is looking at having some type of community garden. I know Breezy Point has been talking about putting an area out and actually doing it in their, in their plan, in their city's plan, to take an area and donate and dedicate it, just like Cross Lake had done. So, I think it'll be, it's just growing, I guess, would be the operative word. So, thank you all for your service. I didn't have anything else. Is there anybody else on the board? Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the Proposed Ordinance for the Cannabis Regulation. Gary Griffin and Chris Pence and Stephanie. No.
Before you go, if I could just say one quick thing, I was trying to average it out here. At the Senior Center, we talked about 19,000 hours of volunteer hours. And the average wage there or value is about $35 per hour. So, when I look at your hours, it's around $99,000 that you're throwing into this county that, with the service that you're providing. So, just to put a little context to what your volunteers are doing and what you folks are doing. So, thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chris Pence, Crow Wing County Land Services and Environmental Services Manager.
Stephanie Shook, Assistant County Attorney.
So, what we have before you today is a draft of the, of an ordinance that would regulate cannabis within the county. This would only apply to those areas under our zoning jurisdiction. So, wouldn't, wouldn't apply to any of the municipalities within, within the county. This would actually end up being a standalone, not a standalone ordinance, but it'd be part of the land use ordinance. It would be just an article within our land use ordinance because it's really just zoning. What we're really talking about is what's the right location, you know, hours of operation and, and those sorts of things. And so, what we're going to do today is just really kind of give you an idea of what, of what this ordinance looks like. Stephanie put this together. This is based on a model ordinance that came from the Office of Cannabis Management at the state. And, and so, it's, it's not a real long ordinance, but we're just kind of want to walk through a few things on it. And there's a couple of areas where we just want to make sure we get your feedback. And the goal would be to, you know, get some feedback from you today and then come back either at the September, can be the whole, or October, can be the whole, with another draft. And then, once we feel like we have a draft that's ready to go for public review, then we put out for a comment and public review process and all the, you know, typical ways that we update ordinances within the county. You want to, you want to walk through the ordinance a little bit, what we put together? That'd be, I think that'd be great.
Good morning, Commissioners. The ordinance that was in, or in the packet is longer than what we are proposing. We've actually met with Debbie and Gary yesterday and kind of shorted up and cleaned it up a little bit because there were things that we do not need to do. As Chris indicated, this was something that we put through the model ordinance. So, obviously, the first thing is that this is required by the statute. We have to have something passed by January 1st, 2025. We have specific statutes that give us the authority, which is what we go through in this first part, where we talk about all the different requirements. You have already passed something with respect to cannabis use in public places. So, that is something that we did take out of this and doesn't need to be part of the land use ordinance because that is something that you have already done. I think the biggest thing that you will want to take a look at, there's an enforcement statute or portion, and that talks about how we will be enforcing what exactly is going on within the ordinance. So, there are two ways and two avenues. We have both what will need to be done by the Sheriff's Office, and then what can be done through Land Services. Land Services will be the authority since this is a zoning ordinance. So, the registration requirements will be something that goes through Land Services. There are specific definitions, and those definitions will be added to the land use ordinance table. One thing that we do not have to worry about and that we are going to remove or not register businesses is lower potency hemp edibles. That is something that we could be a part of, and we could require registration, but we do have the ability to say we're not going to. Many of those businesses are already up and running because of the law that was passed last year or the year before. So, because that's already been done, the thought process is that it doesn't make sense for us to move forward with that. I think the biggest thing that we're going to need some guidance on is where you believe in the land zoning each of these types of businesses should go through. Additionally, there are fees that will be collected. They are required to be a certain amount or less than a certain amount, depending on what the fee is with the state of Minnesota. First, they have to go through the Office of Cannabis Management, go through a preliminary screen with them, and get what would be a proposed license. It then comes to the county where it gets reviewed, and we look at it with respect to the zoning requirements that we're putting forth on this. Once that is done, it goes back to the Office of Cannabis Management, and then the license through the state is done. We can charge a fee for the registration, and it depends on the type of business, how that fee would be arranged. But that is something that you will have to look at and add to the county fee schedule.
I do have a proposed land use table amendment that would show where we're thinking this businesses might best be located. And I think I could share that with Courtney.
So, I do have a question. So, when you put this together, did you start from scratch, or did you borrow it from somebody else? And if you borrowed it from Minneapolis and St. Paul, I'm done listening to it right now because that liberal bastion down there, I don't have any confidence in. So...
It's the model ordinance that was put out by the Office of Cannabis Management. So, it comes directly from the, from the office that regulates this. So...
All right.
So, if you look...
Need to listen, then.
All right. Well, thank you very much. So, if you will look, this is from Article 10 of the land use ordinance, and here's where we list out all the different uses that are, you know, people can do within the county. And then, the zoning districts are across the top. And then, the, down, as you look in the different columns, CU is a conditional use permit. A stands for allowed. P stands for permitted. And if you see a blank... use permit. A stands for allowed. P stands for permitted. And if you see a blank, it means it's not allowed in that district. So there's basically four types of cannabis uses that we would be looking to regulate. One would be the cultivation of it commercially, the manufacturing, the retail, and the wholesale. And so if you would look at what we would have for, for somebody to come get a liquor license, where would that's allowed, that's in the commercial one, commercial two, and then the waterfront commercial, and in the airport district. And so we're proposing basically the same similar standards of where you could put a liquor store would be the same as this.
Okay. So that, that begs a question to me. So I know that liquor, I used to own liquor stores, and I couldn't sell potato chips and snacks and their, are they able to sell this type of products in liquor stores?
I don't think anything would stop them from doing that, provided they got the registration and license, you know, from the state. And then it was from our zoning ordinance that it would meet the requirements in the ordinance. So I don't believe anything would stop them.
They could combine them. They could have them in the same place.
Yes.
Just if they get the munchies, they can't sell, they'll have to go somewhere else for the munchies, right?
The food part, I don't know what they can sell as far as potato chips.
That was meant to be funny.
But that I don't know. But we can figure that out.
So in these zonings that you have listed here, and you said that we're not gonna worry about the people that are already doing it. But, but now let's find out the people that are already doing it aren't doing it in one of those jurisdictions. Now what are you gonna do?
So there's two different things. This is for cannabis only. What's already being done is the lower potency hemp edibles. So you already see signs about edibles and lower hemp. That is what is not going to be covered, because that's already out there.
Is that the five milligram that they talk about?
It's a lower amount.
Lower, when you say hemp, when we're talking about the lower, lower, that's still THC in that lower that you're talking about, but it's a five.
But it has that, there's a cap on it.
Yeah.
That'll be available pretty much anywhere that they want to buy it. It's when you want to go up to the higher potency is when you have to go. So the three-two beer will be available wherever you want to buy it. But if you want to buy strong liquor, you have to go into the liquor store.
That's a good way of putting it.
That's the only way I can figure it out in my brain.
Yeah, I'd agree.
I'm sure Paul had that figured out, too. Of course.
And, and what we're proposing would be very similar in that it's really, we could require a conditional use permit for this if we wanted to, or require a permit, or, but really, it's, they're just getting approval from us for the location, and, you know, hours of operation, those sorts of things are from us. So I really don't think there's much to do as far as a conditional use permit. I think it's just, you know, these are districts that we're gonna allow that use to be in. They ultimately will get their license from the Office of Cannabis Management to be able to run the business at that location. So our involvement is pretty minimal. It's just more of a where and a when discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
That is basically what our approval, or our part in this process is, is to basically say, where can this, where can this type of activity take place? That's the only authority we have. And if we did not adopt an ordinance that would say, where can this take place, or where can we allow this, they could issue a license for any cultivation, manufacture, retail, wholesale, whatever it might be, at the state level, and we would have no say in where that goes.
So we need to get this in first.
So what we are doing here, correct, why we need to have this adopted before December 31st, is so when those licenses happen, and the state provides that comment period to say, is this permitted in Crowing County, when we're saying it's allowed, it's basically that it's in the right zoning area of where that can be. Time, manner, place. Those are basically the only things that we have purveyance of here.
Yeah, I know. And so my, my head kind of goes where, okay, we do that three-two beer versus strong beer. We don't know then, when, when it's allowed, we can't say that they're, they're selling moonshine. You know, I mean, you know, because the potency isn't there. Once you get past this point, there is, there isn't a potency level right now that I know of in the state statute. Once you're saying you're, you're selling the TH product that's above the five milligram, or whatever it is, there is no other cap on top of that.
That is correct. The legislature did not put a cap.
Did not put a cap.
On the THC levels.
Yep.
That is something that they will have to show, and it will be part of the labeling. But there will not be anything else.
And the state regulates that. That's not a county regulation.
Yeah, and that's a state.
I know, but it's something that, that, that will change how that is. I mean, like, if I would have gone into Paul's liquor store, I know I would have been able to buy this proof liquor. If I go into one of these establishments, I can buy moonshine at a, you know, 200% or 100 proof, or whatever.
It will be labeled. As, my understanding is that it will be labeled, for example, 10% THC, 25% THC. So there will be labels on the products, so that there will be, the consumer will have the knowledge as to the potency.
Okay, okay.
Within the zoning areas, we were also able, one of the things that is allowed is buffer zones. So we did look at the buffer zones, and specifically.
Courtney, could you go to section three in the ordinance?
Three.
We should probably go to 2.6 first, before we jump to that. So what we're proposing in the ordinance would be that there would be, according to the statute, we are allowed to limit the number of retail businesses within the county based on population. So we have to allow at least one per 12,500. And what this 2.6 would say is that, once that number is hit, then there'll be no more licenses issued. And that, so that'll require us to have a working relationship with our municipalities, because it's a combination between the municipalities and where our zoning applies in the townships.
So that's up to our discretion whether, how many licenses we want to have.
Yep, correct.
Yeah.
We have to allow at least one per 12,500 people.
Right.
Mr. Chair, a quick question on that. There's no residency requirement for where, who can get that license, correct?
You mean if they were resident of Minnesota, or a resident of Crowing County, for example?
Right.
I am not aware of any requirements of.
There seems to be a concern, I was reading in the Minneapolis paper, that there's outside people, so other parts of the country, buying up these licenses. Is there a concern there?
That would be out of our hands.
Yeah, that isn't anything.
So I, the way the process works is kind of like when you want to go buy a home, they have to go get pre-approved first, the state, and then once they get that, then that comes to, and then it comes to us for a review from a zoning standpoint. And then we have, once we make our decision, we've got three days to give that information back to the state, so they can decide if they're gonna issue that license to them or not.
So would you advise Paul to get all six of those licenses, and then that would take care of Crowing County?
Well, so there was a process that started back in July, that went for about 30 days, where people were able to start making a preliminary application to OCM to get that. And, and so once those are kind of, that time's been closed, now they're getting pre-approved, the process. And then that would be when we would start. So my understanding, at least, was if you hadn't put your name in the hopper during that initial timeframe to get your name in for a, you're gonna have to wait and see how that plays out first, before there be other opportunities to apply for a license.
That actually is a kind of an interesting, and it's a.
Sorry, Commissioner, you didn't bring it up sooner.
It actually is a good question. So, so could I have, could I have applied for all six of those licenses and got those, and then I'd turn around and sell them to Don Corleone, or?
You cannot transfer the licenses.
Oh, okay.
Commissioners, it is, they're using a lottery system. OCM is doing that. What we have listed is a first come, first served. So the first from OCM to us would, so it would be the first six that would come. We have to look at, one comes in, has Brainerd, has Baxter, has Nisswa, Crosslake.
Crosby, yeah.
Have they already issued registrations? Once we hit the six within the county, regardless of where they are.
We're done.
We're done. So we may, we may never see anything.
Yep.
In, in, with respect to our zoning districts, because most of the businesses, at least as we were brainstorming and discussing this, are probably going to be in the higher retail areas, which are going to be in the cities.
So, quick question. So six here is about retail, correct?
This is six cannabis businesses total.
Total.
So they can be.
Cultivation or any, all the, all the ones that you have listed there?
So you can have, we could have four retailers and two cultivation, and that's it.
Okay.
So you can't have six retailers, six cultivation. It's six.
But that number's up to us.
It's, it is, and it's required that one per 12,500 people, and you can do more.
Yeah, minimum.
We have to allow at least six.
That, but this, we could go, we could say we're gonna do 15.
Correct.
Right. And I think the thing to keep in mind, too, is that they have this, you know, they have a micro-mesmo business category, too, where, so you could open a business where you grow, and you manufacture, and you wholesale, and you sell it. And that would be, you know, that would count towards that one.
Because it's all under one roof.
Under one roof, right.
Kind of synonymous with a brewery.
Yep.
Any of the brewery where they do everything, that would be.
Yep.
What they would.
Any of the cannabis products that would be in Minnesota have to be grown in Minnesota?
No.
So it can be exported in from wherever they want. It wouldn't have to be cultivated here?
Correct.
Okay. So somebody could hit the street running, because they didn't have to grow a crop, they've grown it someplace else, and brought it in.
Well, it's, I think it's gonna be grown in a pretty controlled environment, because they're gonna have to manage the potency of that. And so I don't think it's gonna be a lot of that, you know, grown outside, it'll probably.
No, it won't be grown outside. No, it'll be grown in.
Frittered lights, you know, so.
Yeah, in buildings.
And then if you look at section three, as Stephanie had mentioned, there's some buffer requirements that would be in place. So, for example, they need to be with, can't be within 1,000 feet of a school, 500 feet of a daycare, 500 feet of a residential treatment facility, 500 feet of a public attraction, like a park that has a playground or an athletic field. So there are some of those, you know, buffers that they can't be right next to, you know, certain, certain types of uses.
So a question on that. So how, Brainerd, we're not telling Brainerd what to do.
No.
But when you're saying 1,000 feet of a school, anything in Brainerd, that's nothing to do with us.
Correct.
Correct.
Just starts on.
So if there's a school that's in our jurisdiction, okay.
Yeah. Typically, it's probably not gonna be a school, it's much more like a church, or like a park, maybe, that sort of a thing. Probably not a school in our jurisdiction.
Have you had much reach out from other, from the cities in our county, looking at what our ordinance is gonna be, asking us at all to see how they're gonna do theirs?
Well, they can actually delegate authority to us. So cities could ask that we take on that responsibility for the registration, if they are not within our zoning district. Mission Township has passed a resolution, but they only, they don't do their full zoning. But we have not heard, at least that I'm aware of, I haven't heard anything from other jurisdictions. The Office of Cannabis Management really put a lot of information out there for townships, cities, and counties, and that's where this model ordinance came from. So the cities probably have something pretty similar if they were using that. As I indicated, there's been webinars and meetings about these things, and they've been very open about accepting questions from anyone. You can just send an email, and they will go forward with that. But Brainerd, I think, is the only one at this point that we know that has actually passed one.
But there is a cap of that six across the whole county?
The number is countywide, not jurisdiction, correct?
Right.
We can, we have to have, it's not a maximum. We have to have a minimum of one per 12,500 people. Once we hit that, we can say we're done. So we may only end up with two.
No jurisdiction in that, in our county, then, can actually have more than that?
Correct.
Okay, so we do have the cap.
In our, in our zoning.
In our zoning.
Not in the cities, though. So I mean, if a city wanted to have, if Brainerd wanted eight, Brainerd could have eight.
So Brainerd could have eight, the rest of the county could have six, is that what you're saying?
No.
No, I didn't think so. That's what I was getting to.
It's, so Brainerd's ordinance, for instance, says that they are capping theirs at a minimum, or at a cap of two.
Right.
Because they have to allow at least two, since they have to have one for every 12,500. However, if there are five that are issued, other areas within Crowing County, since we are putting a cap of six on ours, they would only issue one.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
Right. That's why we have to be able to keep track. And the other municipalities will also be going with that, and I was going to.
Yep. So another question. So cannabis cultivation, and then you got commercial in parentheses. So if somebody down in St. Matthias Township has 40 acres and they want to, I'm assuming cultivate is grow it?
Correct.
So they can't do it? If they're, if that 40 acres is agricultural, they, they can't do it there?
So this is just referring to when you're using for commercial to sell? If you're, if you're growing it for personal use, that's not, that's not something this ordinance regulates?
But 40 acres would not be personal use.
Pardon me?
40 acres wouldn't be personal use.
Right. There's, there's a, there's a limit in the statute as, as far as how many plants that you can have.
But I mean, if they wanted to grow it for commercial, for, for selling purposes, that would have to be commercial land, correct?
And that would be your decision.
Or you could, you could allow it.
You could allow it in agricultural. I mean, you could allow just cultivation in agricultural if you, that's your decision as the county board.
That was one of the questions that we had today, was from that cultivacy standpoint.
Rosemary just showed me a picture. Who is it? Your cousin?
I don't think she wants to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's her garden.
Well, hypothetically, there was a picture, and it was like a big, it was like a big field of, you know, like somebody's growing it. Well, where would they find commercial property to grow it?
Well, what I think Chris has mentioned earlier is that they have to, we figure that it'll be in a controlled environment, because they have to.
You mean like a greenhouse, or something?
Correct.
Right. Relative temperature, light, that sort of thing. Because if it's grown outside, your inability to regulate the potency is, is more challenging.
And we live in Minnesota, so the growing season is much shorter versus being able to plant it year round.
But, I mean, do we, I mean, it could be an allowed use to, to cultivate in the egg district, if that's what we want.
That's not what you're proposing right now.
Well, that's, yeah, that, we weren't, but that's a question that we want to.
That was a question that we were going to ask.
You.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. And we could allow it, it could be an allowed use. They would still need to have a license from OCM for the cultivation aspect of it, if they were going to do it regardless of where it is permitted to be allowed to be used for that purpose. All we're regulating is where can these activities take place. So you can authorize that would be part of an acceptable use, or an allowed use, in an agriculture zone. But to be able to cultivate it for retail-type purposes, not just personal use, which, as Stephanie mentioned, there are restrictions around how much you can grow, how many plants.
Correct.
That you can grow for your own personal use. To actually cultivate it would also require them to have a license from OCM for that as well.
And that would be one of the six?
That would be one of the six.
Correct.
Correct.
I may be getting a little ahead on this, but who's gonna, who's gonna watch this? Is it land services, or is it the sheriff's department?
Ten more employees with this.
Don't even go there with me.
It falls under the jurisdiction of the land services department to administer it, partnering with the sheriff to help do some of the enforcement pieces that we need them to do. But it'll be, it'll be our responsibility from land services to enforce.
So the complaints would come into you, or, or a question would come into you, you would look at it, you would have the officer, or somebody come out there and check it, or is it?
Just like we would for anything else in our zoning ordinance right now.
From a zoning standpoint.
From a zoning standpoint.
From a zoning, this is one of those that is really a little bit convoluted.
Really?
Because we're regulating the zoning aspect, but the state is the one who is going to be issuing the license. So the state is the licensing authority. All we are basically regulating is, is an acceptable use within this zoning ordinance under our purveyance.
Correct.
And if somebody were to call in and say, somebody over on, you know, such and such street is operating a retail business, we'd call OCM right away, because they haven't started the process to even begin that, the licensure process. So it wouldn't even be on us to, I mean, to enforce. It would really be starting with OCM to, to get ahold of them and say, hey, you, you can't operate because of, you know, of those reasons, too. And, or if there's the six or more, then we're, we're done at that point, too. So, you know, our enforcement is gonna be, you know, fairly limited, just more of a numbers. And then if they start one, they have to have the preliminary license from the state to even begin the process of even operating a business, so.
And if there's any violations of our zoning ordinance, we can suspend the license based on any violations. And then that would go to OCM to determine the length of suspension, and if it would need to, how it would be fixed. The other thing that's been put on the counties is compliance checks, and that involves law enforcement. So we'll have to partner with the sheriff's office.
So would you see 10 over there and 10 back there, employees?
Absolutely.
Oh, Lord.
Administrator Erickson, I don't think convoluted is a proper word, but I don't think we'll use a proper word right, improper word right now.
So that brings up another question. I know when I had a liquor store, and I had a tobacco license, help me with this. So when I, when the county had it, it was $75. So when I, when the county had it, it was seventy-five dollars. And then Baxter decided to take it over and then it went to two hundred dollars roughly in there. Does that, that money, seventy-five and the, the two hundred, that's the money used for the compliance, supposedly the compliance check?
Correct.
So how would, would we incorporate that into the fee?
So the fee that we can charge, as Stephanie has mentioned, there are limits on what we can charge for a fee, half of the amount that the license fee would be up to a certain amount and it's more for a renewal than it is for an initial license. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steph, but I think we can charge five hundred dollars for an initial registration fee. Basically, we can collect a registration fee when an applicant applies to OCM. OCM will reach out to the county and say, this agency is applying for a retail license, does it meet your criteria? Chris will check to see that it fits within the zoning of that area, they will say yes, it fits in that zoning. OCM will issue the license and that applicant will have to pay a registration fee to the county of five hundred dollars for an initial registration and a thousand?
It's, the initial registration cannot exceed five hundred dollars or half of the amount of the state license fee. So for example, if the state license fee currently is five hundred dollars, then we can only do two fifty.
Right.
But as that increases, the maximum we can do is five hundred.
Right.
For renewals, it's a thousand dollars or half the amount of the state license. So that's actually, we put that actually right into the situat, into this portion of the ordinance. The other thing is you have to make sure we're not, this is a registration fee, there's no application.
Right.
So even though they apply, it's essentially they're just, it's going, we're kind of a funnel of a registration. So it goes to OCM, then it comes to us, we look at the registration. Once they submit a registration, the fee isn't, it's non-refundable, and does it fit? If it fits, then it goes back to OCM and they essentially put their stamp of approval on that and the person, and they get a license. And then we're notified that the license was approved.
And then that fee that we are collecting, that registration fee, would be used to help offset the compliance checks that the sheriff's office is going to be required to do.
Can we charge, I'm sorry, Commissioner, can we charge five percent on that for process to the state?
I'm sure we can probably look at that.
So then that begs the question, I know that our great chief deputy, Andy Bradley, is always looking for money to help with his budget or the sheriff's budget. So when Gary, Gary collects that fee at Land Services, would Andy be over there asking for his cut?
Well, Andy probably wouldn't be standing there with his hand out for it, but the way that the fee would be built into our accounting system, it would automatically associate some of that fee to the sheriff's office, yes.
So Gary, I'm sorry.
Like our tobacco licenses.
Hey, we're fine with nine for you.
Keep in mind, we're talking a maximum of six in Crow Wing County and keep in mind that if it's within a city, if the license is actually within the city.
We don't worry about the registration.
It's not going to be the right, we are not gonna get the registration fee and we wouldn't be responsible for the compliance checks unless the sheriff's office is already responding for, for law enforcement in that jurisdiction.
So who figures out what the compliance check, is it in here?
Yes.
Okay, so is it kind of the same as cigarettes where you, 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 you go get your fourteen-year-old kid and you send him in there and try to trick him into?
Yep.
Well, they're, they're requiring the person be at least seventeen, but younger than twenty-one.
Which I think is.
And that's each, and it's not ran, I mean, it's each business will have it every single year. So it wouldn't be, oh, we're gonna skip a year and we may not get a compliance check every year.
I don't think much of that anyway because I think it's just trying to trick somebody and I just don't.
Yep.
Entrapment, you're an attorney, isn't that a trapment? When you could go and try to trick a business?
You don't have to answer that.
You don't have to answer that.
You're not under oath here.
Really go down the rabbit hole on that, but.
So the other, the other piece is just jumping over to the last page, hours of operation, we'd be looking at, the hours of being ten AM to nine PM would be the hours of operation that they'd be limited to being open to.
So Chris, then what I said is like, let's say a liquor store puts a section and they have this stuff in there and they open at eight o'clock, then they wouldn't be able to open that section until?
Right.
Okay, I understand. What, where, where do you, where do you come up with those hours, what, why?
Those are the mandated minimums for, from the statute.
Yep.
Chris or Stephanie, does, does this mean there could be multiple enforcement policies? If, if those that the county may manage operate under this, but the cities can set their own?
No, the standard would be the same for the compliance.
For enforcement, okay.
Yeah, it's just a matter, it's just a matter of who does.
For just total enforcement.
If it's in the city of Brainerd, then the, their police department will do the compliance check, yeah.
Right, and let's say, if this, like the city of Baxter hasn't done one yet, if the city of Baxter says, we don't want a part of this, we're gonna delegate authority to Crow Wing County. Then they have to pass that and then that would come through to us, so anything within the city of Baxter would then have to follow our land use ordinance requirements and do our fees if they delegate the authority, so they have the ability to do that, but they're not required to.
And I doubt they would, I think they'll wanna keep that control local, so.
So in the case of a compliance check, you go and check it, the person failed. The severity of that failure is loss of license, do we have that listed? Do we say you get one, we get one, that's, and that's determined on those six licenses or whatever, that's determined by us?
And that would be an OCM issue if there was a violation of the.
That is an OCM issue, that is not us to decide what the.
Well, we could suspend the license immediately, but it would then go to OCM because we would have to notify them. But if there was a compliance check where we, where law enforcement said they failed, we can immediately suspend the license.
And then OCM takes care of the rest of it?
And then OCM would take over and then they could make the determination and then if it comes back and we said, you know, the county could reinstate the license if we deemed that there had been compliance for other things. But with a light, with a compliance issue, that's gonna all be on OCM.
Convoluted, I don't like that word, but I can't use the other one.
So just, just so everybody knows, O, we keep saying OCM, 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 Office of Cannabis Management.
Correct. Yep. And so I, I just wanna circle back to the land use districts again, just to, I didn't get clear direction on the cultivation, if we want that to be allowed use in the agricultural zoning.
I guess it doesn't make any difference to me, I guess I just think about that, you know, other than for, there's, I've always been under the impression that there's so many uses for cannabis. I mean, for, for cannabis, rope, you can make rope.
That's more.
That's hemp.
Hemp.
That's hemp.
Yep.
Okay. What's the difference, I guess I don't.
The potency.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. Could be stronger rope.
It doesn't work, Paul, it doesn't work that way.
That, that was funny.
But, you know, I, I think because you, pretty much it's known if you do the homework and what other states have done, it is pretty much a cultivated product inside of a controlled environment. I mean, i- if somebody wants to have their eight plants or whatever it is for their own use in an agriculture, in their back garden, you know, I mean, that's, that's something I don't think it's in our wheelhouse.
And that, those are, and, and if a private citizen grows more than what the statute allows, that is a criminal issue?
Yep, yep, yep.
That is not.
That's not a licensing issue, it's not, it's not covered under this or OCM actually.
Correct, if, if someone is cultivating in the backyard and we've prosecuted people for that, you know, if they've got, I think they're allowed six plants, so if they have, you know, a garden of forty plants, then that would be looked at on the criminals.
As a criminal issue.
Because it, they wouldn't have a license. Now, if they had a license.
Yeah, if they're gonna start growing oriental poppies and stuff like that, that's a criminal issue, it doesn't follow any other things, yeah.
Given the fact that the cultivating license is, I think, thirty thousand dollars a year for the license, you probably don't see a lot of folks who are taking risks with an open environment that's not controlled with how they are able to grow.
But then on that, let's say somebody has a giant greenhouse and they decide that they're, and they live in St. Mathias Township and they decide they wanna do the cannabis cultivation. They can't do that because it's not commercial.
Unless we say it's allowed in that district, yep.
Yep, so this is the only, this is the only holds we have, this is the only controls we actually have as a county on it.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I, I could see somebody wanting to cultivate, you know, and that's not, I mean, do we really want, maybe we don't want cultivation as much, maybe in a C1's commercial area, I mean, that would make more sense to be agricultural because that's really not a, you know, we want that more retail and commercial based and not maybe cultivation based.
Right, and I think.
But it's a small, it's so small.
Right, and I think, you know, probably the mezzo businesses are gonna be those that'll end up in larger areas. I don't know, I mean, it's, it's obviously up to you, but the mezzo business, like we talked about a brewery, so would that be something that would go in agricultural where they cultivate, do everything?
Like your farm winery?
The farm winery, yeah, the.
Is, is the, is it eight plants that you can grow for your personal use?
I believe it's six.
I think it's six.
Is that per person or is that per household or per, so you had six for the husband, six for the wife? Kind of.
I have six kids.
How does that work?
I believe it's six per person, but it has to be adults over the age of twenty-one.
Per legal, yep.
So it, okay.
So if you have ten college kids living in the same. But that's not my, that's, I'm not handling criminal cases anymore, so I believe it is six though, restricted.
Per person.
That is six mature.
And it's mature, yes.
Yeah, the flowers, yeah.
So based on the information you heard from Chris and Stephanie today, are there any changes you would like to see to the number of licenses we would allow or to the allowed zoning districts of where this would be at? Or to the hours of operation, any of the things that you heard that you have some purveyance of? If not, then we will refine and come back to you with a updated draft for you to review and then we'll go through that process as Chris outlined.
And then we'll have, we'll have public input if somebody thinks.
It'll have to have a public hearing.
Yep.
Common periods, all that sort of thing, yep.
Yep, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but the public hearing piece, that would all be done through the planning commission?
Correct, yep, since there'll be an amendment to the, to the zoning ordinance, it'll go through the planning commission. Yep, the planning, there won't be no public hearing in front of you, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I just looked at that, it's lawful to grow up to eight cannabis plants at a maximum, four being mature in Minnesota.
Right.
Eight, okay, eight and four.
I think it's, I know, I know in a year or two years down the road, I'm sure it'll be come back to me revisited our ordinances, but this is at least something to start with and a pretty solid base to start on, so, thank you.
Correct.
So, anything else from the board? Thank you. I'll come up with that word yet. I think next we have on our agenda, we have the tax forfeiture process with Gary Griffin. I guess we have Jessica. Yes.
All right, good morning Commissioners, we have before you an update on the new tax forfeiture sale process. I'm sure you've heard a lot about it, but we just kinda wanted to give you a high level, show you how it's been done in the past, what the changes are, and then what we think it's gonna look like going forward. So we did add one page to the packet that I originally submitted, we added kind of our old process. So it's showing you, okay, you know, here's the steps, the taxes become delinquent, then they go through a redemption period, if they do not redeem, then it becomes forfeited. We get our approvals or denials from the cities or townships or DNR and then we sell the property, it goes into our tax forfeited fund and it gets apportioned out every year. That's basically the old process. Now we have kind of two new processes depending on what bucket they're in, so most of our properties are now in three buckets. So we have a pre-two thousand sixteen, so anything forfeited before two thousand sixteen, we'll follow those old rules, like on that first page. Anything that forfeited between two thousand sixteen and two thousand twenty-three are what's in our good faith effort sale is what we're calling it, the state's calling it. And we have to make a good faith effort every year to sell these properties at the estimated market value until June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-nine. When we looked at this, we have about a hundred and seventy, give or take a few parcels that are in this two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-three forfeiture. I did include a map with your packet today, that shows by commissioner district, how many there are in each district. It does not add up to about that a hundred and seventy because there is quite a few undivided interest parcels. So those we didn't pick and pull out because it's really one parcel, it's just an interest in that parcel, so it's just a high level quick view of how many are in each district. So each year we have to make a good faith effort to sell these properties and then report our efforts to MMB, what we sold, what we didn't sell, and remit seventy-five percent of that sale to the state, the county gets to keep twenty-five percent of that up until two thousand twenty-seven. After two thousand twenty-seven and until two thousand twenty-nine, we remit eighty-five percent of that sale proceeds to the state and we keep twenty-five percent. After two thousand twenty-nine, if we still have any of these forfeitures in our possession, then we revert back to the old process of selling and keeping the full funds in our possession. The new forfeiture process, as you see below, is basically that first page plus everything in green and that next flow chart is all the new processes. So everything will forfeit like it did before, it'll go delinquent, we just have to include some more information in that letter that we send out, letting people know that they are about to forfeit, giving them, giving them a heads up that if it does forfeit and it does sell, they may be entitled to a claim on those proceeds. Then it, the redemption period ends, if they do not redeem it, the property forfeits, and then here's where a whole bunch of new processes come in, where we have to notify the DNR within thirty days of every property that forfeits, or most properties. Give the DNR a chance to withdraw any from sale and initiate a condemnation proceeding. If they do not withdraw them, we send notice to all interested parties that that mineral interest, if there was any, was sold to the state for fifty dollars, so before there was no funding exchange, there, there was no fifty dollars. So we have to send a letter letting them know that the DNR has purchased that for fifty dollars. Then those interested parties can challenge that value if they think the mineral's worth more than fifty dollars, they can challenge that. And then we offer the property for sale within six months of when the property forfeited or when it vacated. So if it was a home and someone lived there and it took us a few months to get them to vacate the premises, then we have that six months starts from the date they vacate the home. So we offer it for sale within six months, if it does not sell, and that's at the estimated market value, if it does not sell within thirty days, we then reduce the off, or the sale price to the minimum bid, and the minimum bid is the past due taxes, any fees, interest, publication fees we have, staff time. It's kind of left vague on like the fees that we can charge, but it's basically our staff time publications. And then it's offered at that minimum bid and then if it does sell, we keep that minimum bid. Same with if it sells at the estimated market value, all the county can keep is the minimum bid and then the surplus is what the previous owners have that right to claim. Once the property sells, we notify those interested parties again of any surplus. They have six months to make a claim and then they submit that claim and then we verify it's valid and then we pay out that surplus or we can initiate a court action to determine rights to surplus, so if there's multiple owners, things like that, we go through a court action to determine who gets what percentage. And then if it does not sell, it just goes back into those old tax forfeiture processes.
So just some examples of kind of how the money flows with the old, the current process or the previous process. So the county board would set the sale price for the public auction, the tract is offered at public auction or if not sold, it would be available over the counter for sale. the counter for sale. Let's say the tract sells for, over the counter for $80,000, the county would receive $80,000 towards that tax forfeiture fund. Under that middle bucket, the good faith effort bucket of 2016 to 23 forfeited properties, we have to make a good faith effort to sell those by June of 2029 at estimated market value. For, if the forfeited home were to sell for $80,000 before June 30th of 2027, the state would get 75% of that money, so 60,000, and the county would get 20,000 or 25% of that money. And then on the new process moving forward, so any properties that forfeit in 2024 or forward, we'll say the home for, that forfeited was, has an estimated market value of 120,000. They don't redeem it. We must first put it up at public auction within six months at that estimated market value. If, and leave it up for 30 days. If it does not sell within that 30 days, then it goes back to public auction at minimum bid, which would be those costs such as the taxes, special assessments, and our fees. In this scenario, the minimum bid, let's say, is $15,000. The, a bidder wins this at auction for 80,000, then we have to, we would receive that 15,000 to the tax forfeiture fund, but the additional proceeds from that sale would have to be offered to the interested parties, the prior owners, to make a claim against that. And if they were to make a claim, they would receive that money of $65,000.
They have to make a claim, they have to be a known part, I mean, let's say it's somebody who died, left no estate, whatever, who is the previous, who do, nobody can make a claim on it, can they?
There could be an interested party such as a children that could make a claim against that.
Even though they've never owned the property and it's not in their name?
Correct.
Who determines that then?
If there's a question on that, then that would go to the courts to make that final determination.
Okay. And if they don't have anybody, then where does that money go?
Then we get to keep that money.
We get to keep that, and that's for after the '24. That's a process after '24. In '23, it's all spelled out by the, the new state statute that's been done.
Correct.
And, and a question, so this was all due to, of course, our, our lovely judicial system again because of this, right? Isn't that what happened?
Oh, 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 we got somebody who represents that coming to the podium.
It was the US Supreme Court who made the determination.
So as just a farm boy sitting here, I just looked up forfeit means that you have lost or surrendered your property because you didn't, so, once you've lost it or surrendered it, I just don't know how you can go back and, and collect money. It just doesn't make any sense to me because you've surrendered that property.
Commissioner Crowing, the, the way, the easiest way for me to describe it is they essentially looked at it almost like a condemnation or a taking, that the property's being taken, and so that they should be entitled to anything that they put into the property, which would be the equity.
Increased value by market, though. It's not really a basis.
It's, yeah, it's estimated market value, which is determined by the county. And the case that went up to the US Supreme Court was a woman who had a condominium that went tax forfeit. She did not redeem the property, and I believe she owed approximately 10 or 15,000 in back taxes. It was then sold by the county for, I think, $80,000, and she didn't get anything. And so she sued saying, well, you only lost $15,000. That was my property, I should get the rest of that as a surplus. And that's where the US Supreme Court found in her favor and said that what the, what the state of Minnesota has been doing is illegal. And so that's where all of this has come through the last year with the new state statutes that have come in with the class action that has been settled, that the state appropriated the 109 million dollars to settle all the things, which is what they're talking about with the middle 2016 to 2023 properties and the good faith efforts.
So could we, Stephanie, as a county, because they're turning us into a real, real estate person, as a seller, couldn't we take the seller's fee out of that, whatever portion they should get, even though I disagree with any of it, but that's beside the point, besides our 15,000 that you're identifying as the taxes, couldn't we do that?
So there was, there had been a proposal at the legislature for a 5% fee that the county would claim, which would be similar to a realtor's fee. Instead of that, I can't remember the exact wording, but it's costs, and it's vague, but the examples that have been used are publication costs, staff time. We have to be able to show that it was for this specific property. We never charged for those things previously. That was something that was essentially part of doing business with land services, but now we can assess if we have six properties that have to be, go, that go through publication, that can be apportioned and assessed to that property as cost that we actually had. I suspect that there are going to be a lot of questions and a lot of things that go through this process, and I can anticipate that we're going to see changes within the next, I would expect even next session, that there will be tweaks to this because this was passed, we needed to get the appropriation, and there will be continual changes, and I've been working with Jessica and Mac on this.
And how mu-
One more follow-up question. The sale example from between 2016 and 2023?
Correct.
That bucket, the state gets to keep 75% or 60,000 of that $80,000 sale? Why?
That's because they appropriated the 109 million dollars.
109 million dollars back is what they're doing.
And so that is their-
It's going to go away at some point, and we could still have some of these sales going past the-
And that's why they, they limited it to the 2029. So if it doesn't sell, if the property that was forfeited in that seven-year period of time does not sell by 2029, then that money will come back to the county. But we have to make good faith efforts to sell that, and there are going to be properties that have probably been out there for quite some time and nobody has purchased them, and they'll continue to be out there unsold, you know, until someone decides that, that they want to purchase those. But that's the bucket, that 2016 to 2023, that is that class action part of the litigation that occurred, and that was the agreement for the lookback period, and so that, we actually aren't administering the surpluses and things of that sort. That is all being done through a settlement, and so we just had to provide a list of all the properties that had been forfeited during that period of time, whether there was a sale or not, and they can make a claim immediately.
That's why there are two different ways that these things are going to be administered now moving forward with these pre-2016, with the 2016 to 2023, and then anything that forfeits from here on out. That's why we have these different processes that have to be followed. Basically, those folks whose property forfeited during that lookback period or 2016 to 2023, they don't have to wait for the property to sell to make their claim. They can make their claim through the settlement claim that Stephanie was talking about. They can get their equity. That's why we have a short period of time over the next four years, three, four years, to try to divest ourselves of those properties to pay back that settlement amount.
But they can get their settlement? I mean, that property, even though it hasn't sold yet?
Correct.
Even though it hasn't sold, it's sitting out there in foreclosure, they can get that net?
And that is through this, that's through the state of Minnesota. That's where that 109 million dollars was appropriated, because all of the counties put together lists of the properties that had sold, as well as what the EMV was on all of those, and so that was how the money and the number was determined on that 109 million dollars. Obviously, I don't know the exact numbers. Crow Wing County is, we're pretty active when it comes to the sale of tax forfeited properties, and so-
How many do we have in our 2016 to 23 Q as far as property, it's going to, I mean, you have already done that homework, right?
Yeah, it's about 160, and that's what's shown on that map. Like I said, these numbers don't add up to that 160 because of those undivided interest parcels, but it's right around like 160.
And they would be able to apply for, those people that are in that situation can apply for the state to get their-
Through the settlement.
To get their settlement. The net, what we've estimated market value that at, less whatever they owe.
There's a formula. We do not have to do anything. There's actually a formula that's involved. It does include the estimated market value, but I don't remember the exact numbers because it's not something that we have to do on a county level.
Right.
But had the appropriation not happened and had this, they could all individually sue us.
Right.
We would then have to go through and deal with, you know, there's 170, even if there was a $10,000, you know, surplus, that would have been $170,000 that the county had to come up with.
So they get the surplus, we get the money back that's owed supposedly in the back taxes. That property now is no longer foreclosed.
Well, there's difference between foreclosure and forfeiture.
Forfeiture.
It is forfeited. Once we, once it's forfeited, if they get the surplus, it's still forfeited.
Who owns the property then?
The state of Minnesota, and, and then the county manages it.
Okay, okay.
Uh, if it's sold, if it gets sold, that new person gets that money. The new, if it's sold, the, sorry. If it forfeits, the DNR doesn't want it, it goes to auction, somebody purchases at, at an estimated market value, then we take our cut, any costs that we have, and then the property goes to the new owner.
Whoever bought it.
Whoever bought it. The surplus goes to the previous owner. And if there's issues, like let's say there's three people-
Didn't you say that once they value that property, they can apply for that money now?
That's only during that 2016, 2023.
And then, then what happens with that, those properties, they've applied for it, they've got their money out of it because the state reimbursed them. Did they actually lose that property?
Yes. They've already lost the property.
Who, and who owns that property at this time? It's still forfeited.
It depends. If it's been sold, the new owner has it. If it's-
Another, another one of those words I got to come up with.
I just sent a message to Wikipedia and said you need to change the definition of forfeited because apparently it's not forfeited, so I cha-
The, the only other thing I see here is on some of these, because it's, it's happened in the jurisdiction I served before here, you know, there was a property that went, and the city wanted to get that property to add on to its park property because it was next to its park property. In this situation, it has to be offered to the DNR, and it doesn't allow for a city or a jurisdiction to put their name on it, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Only after auction, yeah.
Huh? What's that?
After auction. So that's one of our, one of the talking points we have is there's like the HRA or cities have in the past-
Yes.
Reached out to us and said, hey, we'd like this property, and depending on what they're using it for, we're able to sell it at a reduced cost to use for schools, parks, low-income housing. Now we are not able to do that. It needs to go to auction first at estimated market value, then reduced to minimum bid, then if it doesn't sell, then we can do HRA, city of Pequot.
But that's only in the 2016 to 2023 group?
That's going forward.
No, that's everything forward.
And that's for on, ongoing after that?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Did the state of Minnesota define what good faith effort is?
No.
Great. I think we got some opportunity here.
Looks like we don't need any new people in land services and-
Thank God.
Oh.
And then I just included a chart here to kind of show you, I know it looks pretty bad because we've had pretty large apportionments, which is funds that, from these tax forfeited sales and our timber sale revenue, which this does not affect our timber sale revenue. We're, we should still receive approximately the same amount as we have been, and that's not included in any of this. But our apportionment has been anywhere from 500,000 to just over a million dollars, which some of that goes into the county general fund or recreation fund, to the cities, schools, our capital project fund. With this, we've reduced a lot of expenses out of our tax forfeiture fund just to be about right in line with what we expect our revenue to be, because as you saw, most of this money is going to go to the state. We're going to have very little revenue coming into this fund, so we're not expecting an apportionment next year, or very little is what we're planning for. Once we see, we get a year under our belt, 2026, we might be able to bet our estimate. But again, we don't know what's going to sell, we don't know who's going to make a claim. We also don't know because of the timelines of when the sales have to happen, some of those claims, they have six months to make a claim, and if it has to go to court, well, that might roll over another year and it might, so it's really an unknown right now, so we're just kind of planning for the worst and hoping for the best here with really a lot of unknowns still.
So of the 37 that are in my district, do we, are we required to reach out to those people, or do they just have to come in on their own and make a claim?
So the 37 that are listed, those are the properties that are in the class action, which is the 2016 to 2023. So that is not something that we have to deal with at all with respect to surplus or notification. That is all being done through the settlement and through a company that has been retained to handle all of that. The only thing the county has to do is make the good faith effort to sell the properties and then the division of the, the 7525.
Good faith effort to sell them so that that money gets replenished into the fund?
Correct.
So those 37 properties, somebody's going to reach out to those?
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
It is, yes.
And, yeah, the state does that through that settlement. That isn't anything that we're required to do.
And every year when we have our auctions, we always, it's called 120-foot radius letter is what we call it. We send a letter to every property owner within 120 feet of a parcel that is going up for auction so that they know, and sometimes that alerts a neighboring homeowner, like, I didn't know that was tax forfeited. I do want to buy that. I had no idea. So they do get that letter from us. It has nothing to do with the surplus, it's just alerting them that, hey, this is going up for sale.
Okay. I, I don't want to prolong this, well.
Why not? Let's go for it.
Of the 37 in my district, how many do we still own, or are they, are they long gone, sold to a private, somebody else? Do you know that?
These 37 are ones that have not sold. These are what's going to go up for auction here. Hopefully by the end of September is our goal.
Okay.
It's, it's the ones that have sold already that fall under that window that could be a challenger that'd already done?
All of them. I think all of them from 2016 to 2023, that all goes-
Yep.
Through the state. We don't have anything, the only thing is that good faith effort to sell the remaining properties that are still under forfeit.
I just, I'm, I don't, I, again, I won't try to understand what the state's done there, but it says until '27 and 85% from '28 to '29.
So there's an incentive for us to sell that as soon as possible.
That's, that's the, that's our, it's going to cost us 10% more if we liquidate them after that date.
Correct.
Or we'd get 10% less of whatever that proceed we would get.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for experts here?
Totally frustrated.
We share your frustration.
We do have a few more things. We wanted to kind of get your thoughts on.
So one thing that we'd like to look at with this is to move to online auctions for the sale of these tracts. Part of the reasoning for that is because there's going to likely be more sales throughout the year, that, for example, any of the new process, they have to go up for auction at estimated market value, and then if they don't sell at estimated market value, in 30 days, they have to go back up for auction at minimum bid. So right there, there's an additional auction right off the bat.
Okay, so, so that's, okay.
No, no, he's getting excited.
Yeah, so, well, none of us can buy.
I know, I know.
Commissioners can't. But so, so if it's hypothetically, if it's 80,000 and it doesn't sell, then it goes back to minimum, which minimum would be?
The taxes.
Of whatever the taxes are.
And fees, yeah.
If it's 16,000 something, that's where the starting point then?
Correct, and it can get bid up from there, but that would be the, the starting point at that point.
And would be assessments. If it's in a city and it has assessments on it, that's also included in on that.
Correct.
So online auction, so the auction is just like, you know, for, from nine until noon, but then people can be online and do it, or, or how does that, what does that mean?
It would be the online auction, like she said, the first chunk, it would be down there for thirty days, available for thirty days.
Oh.
And then it would be dropped down to minimum bid for thirty days. And then we could go to our.
Oh, I, I think I see, it's like sometime they sell a car.
Right.
And it keeps, you know, I bid thirteen thousand and the next guy bids fourteen thousand.
Right.
And then eventually there's a, it stops at a certain time, right?
Right.
Yes.
And you would be looking to use the same public surplus auction site.
The highway department does, yes.
You could, you could look to buy a piece of property, you could look to buy an old vehicle, you could look to buy any of the forfeited property that the sheriff's office sells. We would utilize that same Crowing County public surplus site to sell all of these items.
Okay, wow.
And there's multiple other counties like St. Louis County, Malax, Swift, there's a few, handful of others as well that have already been using that site to do this.
To do that already.
Prior to this.
Okay, so there is a pattern out there that we can adopt or look at.
And I believe you will start to see more counties doing that, just given some of the timelines Michelle was talking about where it has to be offered for a thirty day period. Then you have to offer it again. Think of the manpower and the hours that go into holding an in-person auction once or twice a year. Now, if you're doing this multiple times because of what that forfeiture timeline looks like, this is a, a much more effective. Plus it's going to expand your reach to potentially maximize whatever opportunities there are.
So the cost of the auctioning, that come out of the proceeds?
There would be no cost to us. There would be a five percent buyer's premium that the buyer would pay.
Okay, and that pays for all the.
Auctions.
Auction stuff, okay.
Yep.
So this is the way we would go forward with it now. Gary wouldn't sit there with his gavel and say, sold, and no more of that, okay? So then like the forty, uh, that's left out by the school farm, that would go on and be the same thing? We wouldn't, or wouldn't that be the same?
That's before.
That one's pre-two thousand sixteen.
Pre-two thousand sixteen.
Still go to online auctions.
Don't keep selling it the same way we did with something like that?
Correct.
Yeah, we can do online or we can do a traditional if we want.
Okay, okay.
Um, with that, of course, additionally, if a parcel forfeits and we need time for that person to move out of the home, that would also, we still have to follow the timelines of it has to be sold within six months. So we could have additional properties that go up for sale at different times, maybe one or two alone that would have to go up for sale at some different times. Um, there could be more expense involved, of course, with having just the staff time involved with managing, um, those timelines that are involved in reaching out to taxpayers to notify them if something's sold and if there's a surplus on the new process moving forward. That is our responsibility to reach out to them and let them know that there is a potential surplus for them to claim.
And these are only properties that the county actually holds the title on through forfeiture?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Not somebody who's foreclosing on a house or a loan company, right? We're not involved in any of that.
No.
Okay.
Um, as we said, mentioned earlier, the properties would not be easily available for local jurisdictions until it got through the auction process and didn't sell. Then that would make it available at that time. Um, the other thing with these processes, cash is king. Um, we need those funds available to be able to give to the state, to be able to have that surplus available to, in case they, the property owner does claim that. So there really wouldn't be any options for contracts on sales moving forward. Um, you know, and we're hoping that to kind of move that forward across the board would be the hope. So that administratively, we're treating all of our sales the same and not having contracts as an available option for purchase.
So no more, so it isn't where you can come in and say, put, what was it, ten percent down or twenty percent down?
Fifteen.
Fifteen percent down, and then the county would finance you for ten percent?
We gotta eliminate those on twenty sixteen forward.
On all.
All of them. Okay, okay, yeah, yeah.
So we would allow those that obviously currently have a contract, we have about a hundred and twenty-six of those to finish out their contracts. But we would not allow contracts on any new purchases.
Okay.
And on that with repurchases, we're also looking at keeping those as, not allowing contracts on those, potentially on a case by case basis. Um, just to keep everything consistent, like Mac was saying, across the boards, we're not, is this a contract? Is this not? When did it forfeit? We just want everything cash.
Could we get to a point on one of these where, where the county wants that property back because it adjoins other property? And then the, the county would purchase it?
We could, um, put it in a conservation status, but it still has to go through that two auction thing first.
Go through all the processes, but we get down to the end and the county would like to have that in their hundred and five thousand acres or something like that.
What else?
Tell me, Anne.
Questions or concerns for Jessica or Michelle?
Nope.
Everybody.
Everybody on board with the concept of the online auction?
Yep.
And is everybody on board with the concept of no contracts for everything moving forward?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Got what you needed? Great, thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
You're famous.
Thomas.
Good morning.
Good morning, Tom.
Bleed still morning, yep. So here today to talk about a easement request. Um, this easement request is a little bit different than other ones that we've received in the past, and we'll kind of get into that a little bit. But, um, we received notification from a realtor and a potential future owner back in June, July, that the easement that was on the property wasn't sufficient enough for them to close. And so there's a little bit of history on this, um, piece here. So this is in, uh, the tax forfeited properties in Gale Lake Township. PID number six four one zero zero five three three. Can see up on the map here, um, it is listed as TF property. This is almost a forty acre chunk, um, on Clo Road and then Woodpecker Trail. Uh, Woodpecker Trail is a pretty well-established private road, nicely gravelled. And so in nineteen ninety-six, um, properties A, B, and C here was one chunk of private property. And the county board granted an easement to a landowner. Um, between ninety-six and two thousand and five, the property was split in half between parcel A and then parcels B and C were together. At that time, um, the easement, the county board granted another easement, uh, in two thousand and five, like I said, to the, um, properties that were listed as B and C. And when we granted both of those easements, they were listed to an individual landowner. They didn't run with the property. And so then here recently, um, B and C were split and C was sold. And so the title company is claiming that they don't have technically legal access to close on the sale. And so we were approached, um, and asked if we could just update the easement, um, for a Kyle Rogers and the benefiting property, um, listed as C there. So this one's a little bit different in that normally we would come to you and ask, you know, to give the thumbs up or not, um, for the landowner to move forward to complete their survey and then come back with a drafted easement. The survey's already been done. It was done twice, and so we already have that on file. Um, Stephanie has been working hard to, um, go through that easement to make sure that, um, this time it's going to run with the property and not with the owner so that we don't have to come back and, and do this once more for property listed as C there. So a little bit different, um, but still asking, uh, for your comments, concerns, questions, and then, um, hopefully potential approval at the next county board meeting.
Just have, oops, go ahead.
Costs that's related to this, Stephanie's cost or, or any redoing the deed and everything, they're, they're paying for that? We're not paying for that? The county's not paying, the taxpayers are not paying for that?
That, the, um, normally when we present an easement, you know, there's certain, certain fees that we charge um, because they're, you know, taking a piece of the county property. That's already been done. But if there was fees that, um, you want to do impose as part of this, so like the recording fee, that type of stuff will all be done by the landowner. Um, but if there's any fees associated that you guys would like to charge, that's something you could handle.
Good morning. The answer is really no, other than the recording fee. We haven't charged back any of our administrative costs in a situation like this. Um.
Why?
Good question.
I don't know. I mean, what do you think?
I think before when the, the county boards, um, you know, the, uh, point was to put these easements with people instead of property, that was probably, I don't know, that was the, the best choice because people move on, they pass away, and then we have these issues.
Right.
We're just trying to correct something that, uh, we did in the past.
So how many of those do we have? I mean, I, you know, the little bit of work I've done with land, it's usually you'd like the easement to be on the land so it doesn't matter who the owner is. Do we have a lot of easements that we have on county properties that are just to the person?
I, um, can only make an assumption, uh, board chair. I came in two thousand and nine and this was the practice when I started was to give easements to people. Or, and it wasn't until it was probably two thousand and eleven, we got, you know, the county attorney to agree that we're going to start doing it to the land so that we don't have these types of issues.
So we might have some coming up down the road and.
Yep.
And all the proper stuff has been done for the easement. It was just the easement instead of, went to a name instead of to a property ID.
Correct. And so then we, instead of going out and searching for all those, uh, we let folks come to us if they, uh, encumber a issue with their title.
So in essence, just, uh, where my point is, is everybody, all the other taxpayers are paying for this. You know, for staff time, for the county attorney's office, and I, I don't know, it just don't, it don't meet the smell test for me. I mean.
I think there are a couple of things to consider. Number one, these are going to be random and hit or miss. They're, they're not something you're going to see on a regular basis. It's going to come up when a property wants to transfer. When you're selling ownership or transferring ownership of a property, you're going to find a situation where you have an easement that is specific to a name versus to a par, a property or to a parcel number. So to be able to know what the implication is going to be in the long term, to Commissioner Lubke's point, hard to tell. It is, it is going to be difficult to see what that would be. Number two is how do you establish the fee for what this will be? Typically for us to charge a fee, you need to have it in your fee schedule, or you need to have statutory authority to be able to charge a fee for a particular service. There is some portion of the fact that you already are paying your taxes to cover that cost of what's associated with doing the business of the job. So where is the authorization to establish the fee for this purpose? Now, that does not mean that you couldn't, if you wanted to establish a fee for what, uh, transfer of an easement maybe would be the way of stating that, you could determine what the applicable fee would be based on the estimated amount of time that one would take. You could establish that as part of your fee schedule, and it would be something that could then be charged in the future.
If I could, Mr. Chair, um, when we looked at these and, um, thinking about charging or not, one of the, um, considerations I, I've looked at is if we don't do it, what kind of issues do we have with parcel C from a taxation standpoint? That now that they have no legal access other than by air, um, I suppose.
Water, they have access by water.
If there's, if there's a legal.
Water, water, water.
I don't know that there's an access on that. I guess they could walk through the tax forfeiture to get to Little Lake, but anyways, yes. And, uh, just trying to say, well, that increases the value and helps with the, the property tax side of things too. So I'm not saying that's a hundred percent right or wrong, just saying those are some of the considerations, charge or not charge.
And the reason it was that we're here today is because the best practices that we did previous to this was to give easements to names and not to property IDs.
That is correct.
Was our best practices back then that said, that's what we're doing. We're changing those now and saying, now you need to pay for our change in doing, doing our procedure. I would, yeah, I, I, I don't, unless you could really delineate the amount of money that you're actually doing, I don't know if it's worth the, the time and effort to put it in the fee schedule. Because in that fee schedule, you're going to have to show that you use that sta, that amount of staff time to do that in all these. Yeah, I, no. I'd make it happen, I think.
So if there's no other questions, um, this will be on consent, if that's okay, for next week? Or would you like to see it in the packet, in the full?
I'm, I'm okay with just, yeah, getting it, getting it taken care of for those people.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And now my favorite thing. The comprehensive plan.
Good morning again. I don't know if that's the, the favorite thing or the favorite item on the agenda being the last is what I'm guessing, so.
Well, we're all awake yet, so that's good.
So I figured this should only take me about an hour and a half to go.
Oh, Lord.
So I think we'll be fine. I think, uh, you know, I don't know if we need a break beforehand or not, but, uh.
I was wondering if we should have a break beforehand, I don't know.
So just, uh, this is, uh, just one last, uh, visit with you about the comprehensive plan before. The plan is for to go to the regular board meeting, uh, a week from today and requesting approval. Um, I was here back, chatting with you back in Ju, uh, July and had given you a little bit of update on the comments we'd received. At that point, we had received about six comments, and then after that, to the end of the comment period, ended up receiving about another, you know, probably seventy-ish, I suppose. We ended up with eighty-two comments total. Um, the last comments that we received were, were a lot on AIS and concerned that there weren't enough, um, AIS, um, comments that were in the plan. And so we did add a little bit of language around the one wash, one plan section, because all those have AIS discussions and all those plans. So we, we, we brought that out a little bit to, to clarify that. Um, and then we also, um, after the, because then we had a public hearing, um, back at the planning commission meeting in July, and the planning commission did recommend, um, uh, approval of the plan as it was submitted. Uh, but they, we did add a little bit of language under, if you remember in the plan, it generally put in trends. And so we did add a trend for aquatic invasive species to just talk about, um, some of the opportunities and issues that AIS do pose within the county. Um, didn't have any, um, impact or any changes over the policy in there, but just talked about the, uh, the trends that we're seeing with that and what, uh, type of a threat it would be to the water resources in the county. Um, the other change that we made was just a clarification for, uh, for higher department about the, uh, lost sales tax. We just had a little bit of, just a couple, a couple, uh, um, brief changes to that. And then, uh, there's also a brief change that, um, when you get back into, again, part of the transportation piece about some of the trends, um, instead of being an assessment, the term we used was to be evaluated. So, um, but always the plan is in, you know, pretty much what we've been talking about every month for the last six months about all the items and all that we've chatted. And so, um, the interesting part about doing a, um, comp plan for a county is that we actually have to adopt an ordinance to implement our comprehensive plan, which is a little odd. Um, but that's what, so that's what will be before you at the meeting, um, next Tuesday would be to do that. And, uh, and so there'll be a resolution and a, uh, and then an ordinance to adopt the comprehensive plan. And so the resolution will have two components. One would be to, um, adopt, to approve the ordinance that adopts the county comprehensive plan. And then second would be to, um, adopt a future land use map that's in the comprehensive plan as a current land use map and would be effective upon publication, as we've discussed before. And the third component would be that, um, for those citizens that had any changes to their individual property based on the update to the land use map, would have a twelve month window to come in and, um, be able to apply to the planning commission at no cost and, and have their individual parcel looked at. We did that same thing back in two thousand and eleven when we made that last update. And we had, um, some folks come in that wanted to discuss their, um, specific, you know, zoning on their property. So, um, I, I think we're almost there. We're right, we're just coming to the finish line. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have or where we're at with the process.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I've looked over the comp plan and I'm very impressed with it. Because what I really appreciate is you looked at some trends in the opportunities and potential issues that are out there that will be coming. I don't remember seeing that in the previous comp plan that was developed. So I think this is a very good thirty thousand foot look at, at our county and where it'll be going in the next number of years. So I appreciate this. I think you've done a great job and with the assistance, assistance of, uh, Bolton and Mink.
Yes.
I think it's, it's just a great document. So thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I, I thought when we were talking about it, we were talking about a twenty thousand foot and rather than thirty.
Well, he moved it up another, take a little more.
Okay.
The ground's coming up to meet us. We're not, we're not flying any lower.
Right.
And it, it's like any of these things, you know, like, like some great sage says, you know, it's really hard to predict the future because it hasn't happened yet. But, you know, I, well, that, some sage, I don't know who it was, some guy said that. And, uh, but I mean, and that's the same thing when we go back and look at, look at where we were at from our, the old plan we had to, you read that one and you go, holy mackerel. Nobody ever thought they would be doing this. Nobody ever thought this was going to happen. Nobody, you know, you didn't plan for that in the plan, and so we need to keep it. We need to keep it more of a living document. I would like to see us, you know, maybe five years down the road, maybe take a little bit of a look at it and say, how did, how are we doing so far? We do that on our, on our watershed plans, you know, we set those in place for a long time and we come back every year, I think, and revisit a little bit. I know that's what land services does when they're looking at ordinances, you're tweaking them as we go along, so. Um, but, um,
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's, 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 it's well-written and it's, uh, I was questioning the fact that we would have an outside service helping us with it and not do it in-house, but I was wrong. This, they did a really nice job.
Yeah, Bolton and Mink did a great job. I was, they're, they're a really a definite positive addition to the process for sure.
Yeah, 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 so.
Questions for Chris? You'll see this on your agenda then on Tuesday? For approval of or adoption of the ordinance for the comp plan?
And the land use map.
And the land use map.
Yep.
Okay.
And look at that, it didn't even take me an hour. What a deal. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Anything else? Nothing on the agenda, we're done. Yep, okay.